I'd like to call this meeting of the Harwich Planning Board to order on Tuesday, September 25th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. As we call to order every time, recording and taping is, as required by law, the town may audio or video this meeting, which we're doing, and any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the chair. Is anybody recording today? Chief, you good?
Good.
Okay, all right. So, and the public, the public hearing begins with one, one topic here, PB 2018-34, 157 Route 137, represented by Ford and Ford Attorneys at Law, seeks approval of a site plan review, special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-55, to formally establish a proposed paved entrance onto Austin Road and to add three new parking spaces. The property is located at 157 Route 137, MAP 87, parcel U 2-1, and is in the C-H-2 and WR zoning districts.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not to be technical, but by him reading the meeting, you don't need a motion to open it, you just need a motion to close it. Makes absolutely no sense, but...
Well, we have an extra motion there.
Okay.
Okay. So, any comments? Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Mike Ford representing the applicant with me, Sean Riley, Sean's the site engineer, and Aaron Palhemos, Aaron is the president and CEO of PSD, the company who owns the property and operates their headquarters out of this particular site. So, this is really a fairly simple matter, but one that triggered the need for a site plan special permit under the zoning bylaw. If you went out to the site, you probably observed in the area that we're seeking to officially get your approval for a curb cut onto Austin Road was kind of a gravel entrance and exit that's there. I think that's a leftover frankly from a perk test that was done years ago, and in looking at the property for Aaron Palhemos, he indicated he wanted to bring it into compliance with the bylaw. I asked Sean to draw up a plan for a proper ingress and egress out onto Austin. There are additional three spaces that result from this as well. So, that frankly is the proposal. A reconfiguration of a parking lot or an ingress such as this and the increase in the number of parking spaces does require a site plan special permit, and thus we filed. I've reviewed the staff report. The only item I saw on the staff report, which I thought was very complete, was the notice to a butters. I provided those, the originals receipts to Charlene just before the hearing started, so I think now the application is complete in all respects. We do have, since Austin Road is a private way and not a public way, I can report to the board that PSD does have a purchase and sale agreement to purchase an easement to be able to access Austin Road with the owners of the fee interest in the road. If you needed a copy for your file, I have one. I don't know whether you need one to show that or not, but I have one where I've redacted the, the purchase price, but we do have a binding agreement, so I think there's any question of our standing to be able to utilize Austin Way. We have this agreement, which is contingent upon obviously getting approval from this board to formalize the curb cut. So, Charlene, if you want a copy of that.
I don't believe that we do need a copy for the file. The board can't get into whether somebody has legalized...
I didn't think so, but I just thought I would ask, and some towns, planning boards do ask for evidence of standing, particularly when it comes to a private way, so we thought we had it. So, we are requesting a number of waivers. They're outlined in the staff report. I'm happy to go through each one of those in as much detail as the board wants. I think the staff report indicates what our reasoning was on each one of the four waivers that we were seeking with respect to matters that weren't shown on the plan. And we also have, as I said, Sean Riley here, who can speak to any, any one of those items, including the site distance one, if the board had questions regarding it. So, with that, I think I'll, I'll rest. Mr. Chairman, there's really nothing being constructed, other than the, the access out onto the road and the three parking spaces.
Charlene.
I don't have a whole lot more to add to this, except to say that we received absolutely no comments from any board or committee in town or any department in town. We did receive the certified mailings. The site has been in existence since at least 1980, having gone through site plan review at that time. Even with more restrictive requirements for commercial developments within the Water Resource Overlay District, it still meets all the necessary requirements. All administrative and filing requirements have been met. Staff does recommend approval of the requested waivers, which have to do with location of trees, stopping site distance, specifications for lighting, curbing, fencing, parking, and wheel stops, and also details for landscaping and the building plan. Staff does recommend standard conditions that are noted in the draft decision, but pretty basic, straightforward.
Okay, are there, is that it, Charlene?
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or concerns from the planning board?
Mr. Ford, it's a little unclear to me. Palhemos Savory de Silva and I've been by it, I know where it is and so forth.
Right.
They're the title holders to this.
That's correct.
Okay, because they're not on your application actually, and it was, it wasn't clear as to...
Oh, I'm sorry. The title holders are the LLC, 157 Route 137 LLC.
Yep.
And that's a limited liability corporation?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Owned by or controlled by?
Palhemos.
Palhemos Savory.
He's the manager of the LLC, in addition to being the CEO of Palhemos Savory.
All right.
Palhemos Savory's really the tenant, so I stand corrected on that, Mr. Ford.
Technically.
Right.
A small technical.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Mr. McFarlane, you, you good?
No, I'm good.
I'm good, thank you. David, anything? Alan, Mary?
No questions.
No questions.
Any public comments? Anyone? Chief?
Chairman, I stand before you, I represent the town as in a butter, and first of all, I like to speak on behalf of plans that makes sense.
Yeah.
And this makes sense.
Yeah.
And they have done a terrific job with that property. We're gonna be, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to make our property, again, representing the town with our new station, to look as nearly as nice as what they've done. So, I speak on behalf of the request, and I, I hope that you'll pass it. Thank you.
As a, as a resident of East Harwich, very proud resident of East Harwich, and someone who's familiar with what's been done there, I couldn't agree more with the chief. But regardless, we have to, to follow the protocol, so...
Exactly.
Any, any concerns at all? None that I can see, engineering, none? Fire, police?
This is probably as straightforward a plan as, as there ever will be.
Well, then, shall we take a vote?
Yeah, close the public hearing.
Let's close.
Close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
I'm giving it to you.
Aye.
No opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the property is located within the CH 2 and WR zoning districts. Two, all requirements for the zoning districts have been met. Three, the site is currently being used commercially. Four, the new entrance would not create a miss, a nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian and vehicular traffic along Austin Road. Five, the waivers requested do not substantially derogate from purpose and intent of the bylaw.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Move to approve the waivers as requested based on the fact that the waiver does not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw, of this bylaw. One, location of a free standing sign. Two, stopping site distance. Three, specifications for lighting, curbing, fencing, parking, and wheel stops. Four, landscaping or building plans.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Move to approve with conditions, case number PB 2018-34, 157 Route 137 LLC, care of Ford and Ford Attorneys at Law, for a site plan review special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-55, to formally establish a proposed, a proposed paved entrance onto Austin Road and to add three new parking spaces for property located at 157 Route 137, MAP 87, parcel U 2-1, in the CH 2 and WR zoning districts. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the applicant, application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, and with the following conditions imposed relative to the site plan review. One, any additional signage would have to conform to the Harwich Sign Code. Two, the site plan special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Three, the site upon completion shall be inspected and signed off by the town planner or a designated planning board member. Four, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Next, we go to the public hearing, new business. First in order is review the CPC application for housing trust and housing coordinator and a possible vote to support.
So, the CPC does have a requirement now that please list other commission board committees, organizations that may have involvement in jurisdiction and partnering. I did list the planning board. I do strongly believe that the planning board is integral to the creation of affordable housing in a number of ways. One, helping to find locations, but the second is also to come up with zoning bylaws to help in that effort. And once we hire a housing coordinator, that individual or that company will be assisting me and assisting you in developing zoning bylaws that will help create affordable housing. When I say affordable housing, I don't just mean capital A affordable housing, but also what we also call workforce housing. So, I thought I would, you know, ask the board if they would be willing to help support this application. You don't have to, it's okay if you don't, but I thought you guys made, when I say you guys, I mean the board, is a, is really part and parcel of the creation of affordable housing.
Yeah.
So, that is why I have it for you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. McFarlane. The, the agenda says we're gonna get an application for a housing trust and housing coordinator, but I don't see anything for the housing coordinator.
It is in, it is part of this. If you look, the total amount requested is 340,000. Thirty thousand of that is for the housing coordinator. If you look at the project information, it does, Harwich Affordable Housing Trust/Part-Time Housing Coordinator.
Yep.
On the very first page, Joe.
And with...
Project information.
With respect to that, because I've been kind of following this a little bit, wasn't there some discussion about combining two or three towns and having a combined housing coordinator?
Yes, there is, and it's still going on. We're actually having a meeting this Thursday to review an RFP, which we hope, if everybody says, hey, this is great, each individual, individual town is actually gonna go out for a request for proposal to hire a housing consultant. That could be an individual, that could be a firm or an entity that can do the work that we are looking for. What we've discovered in conversations, primarily with the Town of Brewster, who already has a part-time housing coordinator, what we've discovered is finding an individual who has the breadth of information that we are looking for, it's probably gonna be impossible to find. If we can go out and hire an entity that's gonna have, you know, more than one employee associated with it, they will have that breadth of information and that depth that we're going to need to do what it is we want to do with the housing trust and with the housing coordinator.
Charlene, I, I have a question about this, because I, I am definitely in, in favor of affordable housing, but what I'm, what I'm concerned about in our town is, you know, affordable housing is just one part of the calculus.
Mm-hmm.
Right? We've gotta have affordable living costs, we've gotta have opportunities so that these folks that, that would like this housing or could live in this housing can afford to pay the taxes and participate, and I'm, and I'm wondering whether or not any, any consideration has been given to what we've been spending as a, as a town and how that plays out over time, because I can see taxes, if we continue to spend, taxes will be going up, rather than spend, take a break, pay for it, and then, then go again.
We, we actually just had this in-depth conversation at the Capital Outlay Committee meeting a little earlier this evening. You bring up terrific points here, and the, a lot of the affordable housing that I think that we need to lean towards is really gonna be rental housing.
Yeah.
There's a strong need for rental housing.
Sure.
When you do create housing that is capital A affordable, the individuals, whether it's a homeownership, those individuals actually get a tax break based on the adjusted amount for that home.
Good.
So, let's say it's a, you know, it's, it's valued at $350,000, but the affordability brings it down to, I'm gonna use round numbers, $200,000. Their taxes are based on the 200,000, not the 350,000. So, there is that, you know, that check and balance there. With the creation of rental housing, yes, the tax burden is going to be on the individual or the entity that builds that housing. However, even they're gonna get some kind of a, either tax incentive, that's gonna be what makes the development affordable. There's many ways to make a development affordable, that's one of them, is it tax credit? So, they get a break that way, and that's only one of many.
Yeah.
So, there are ways of helping to keep those numbers down.
Yeah. I, I think it's, and thank you very much for that, Charlene. I think it's important that we have those sorts of discussions, and I think the only question remaining that, that I have is, you know, where, where does the 340,000 come from?
That comes straight from the money generated from the, when you sell your property, a certain amount of that, what you pay at the Registry of Deeds goes into the CPC funds. Not every town has accepted CPC, we did, so 3% of what you are spend or paying for a house, 3% off the top goes into this CPC fund. And if I'm making a mistake here, we have two members on the CPC.
Right. Yeah, let me clarify that. Yeah, and Charlene is in part right, because that is what the state component of the CPC funds are. The local component that was voted by town meeting here in Harwich, and I wasn't here, so I don't know exactly what year...
That's right, I got it backwards.
There's, there's a 3% surcharge on your real estate tax, and when you look at your real estate tax bill, you will see that. And that 3% surcharge goes into a fund that is controlled by the Community Preservation Committee. What you see here in front of you is one of what are usually numerous applications for use of those funds. Those funds are to be used for housing, recreation, open space and conservation, and historic renovation or historic preservation.
And if I might, actually, only 10% has to be allocated annually to open space, historic, and affordable housing. Recreation doesn't have to have a percentage allocated, but they are eligible to request funding from CPC.
And then the additional money beyond those monies that are tagged for the special uses that Charlene pointed out are free to be used for any of the eligible uses, as determined by the Community Preservation Committee, which both Mary and myself are members of. Now, if that answers your question, I had two questions for Charlene.
Please.
I have a question to follow up on that.
Yeah, sure.
The 3% on top, or the surcharge, I think you said?
Right.
Is that, is that state or each town sets?
The, the enabling legislation is state legislation. Each town makes its own decision as to whether or not it assesses the 3%.
Anywhere from 1 to 3%.
Anywhere from 1 to 3, yeah. So, the Town of Harwich did make that decision locally, and that was approved by town meeting here in Harwich, and again, I, I wasn't here, so I don't know exactly what year that was.
But it could be, could go back to town meeting and could be 1%.
And the town meeting could decide not to, not to continue it at any point in time.
So, it kinda has to be re-upped every year?
No, it doesn't have to be revoted.
It was, it was a 20-year thing, and then, once the 20 years is done, there's some kind of mechanism to, to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Either revoke it or just to keep going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so my question to Charlene is, Charlene, I mean, I know it's very early in the process, and the trust hasn't been fully established.
Right.
But do we have any concepts as yet as to exactly how, what you're asking for, the 310, the 310,000 dollars here would be used for?
I think the simple answer is no, but it doesn't mean that there aren't ideas and thoughts out there.
Right.
We had the first training for the housing trust members last week in Chatham, and we have a second training this Thursday afternoon here in Harwich. Boy, did I learn a lot.
Okay.
And I also learned that we need to think broader than we've been thinking and engage with developers, and, you know, find property and, and engage with developers to see what creative ways we can create housing.
Right.
Because there are so many ideas out there that frankly, I don't think any of us really have, have looked at, because, you know, we usually see the single-family homes done through like Habitat for Humanity, which is a wonderful thing, and, and those need to continue, but there's so much more out there that, that we can actually do.
Okay, thank you. Now, my other question actually is more of a comment. Last year, the Community Preservation Committee did authorize and town meeting approved $400,000 to the housing trust, plus $30,000 for the coordinator.
Actually, it was 500,000 total.
It was 500 total? Okay, I'm sorry, I got the number wrong.
So, 370, 470 for the trust and...
So, then, this, this would be additional money.
Yes.
While I am 100% in favor of what this money is going to be spent for, and I have trust in the, the development of the housing trusts with Charlene's help to sort of develop a program that is going to be viable and that will work for the Town of Harwich, my only concern at this stage is committing additional funds to this actual project without knowing two things. One, how those funds are going to be used, and two, what the competing interests are going to be through other applications, some of which may be for housing. I mean, last year, we had the application from the Housing for Humanity.
Habitat.
Habitat for Humanity, you know, for assistance in supporting their development, which we approved and we, we funded. So, until we know what some of the competing funds are and what some of the competing issues are, I'm a little bit hesitant to sort of vote to proceed with this amount. Now, again, I'm 100% in favor of this, and the Community Preservation Committee will be getting the totality of the applications by October 15th, which is, you know, only less than a month away, and at that point, we'll have a better handle on both how much funds are available and what the competing issues are going to be at that time.
Mary?
Go ahead, Charlie. So, I have kind of an exact opposite concern from Jim's. My concern is more that we've formed a trust, the trust needs money to run, and the whole point of having the trust really was so that it was an entity that can buy and sell and develop real estate without having to rely on our annual town meetings to transfer the property. So, my concern would be if we don't continue to fund them, that, and again, trusting that they're just at the infancy stage, but it costs money to put out RFPs to, to buy and sell property, to get the properties to a point where the developers can bid on them and start developing. There are inherent costs in that on, on the trust side, so from my point of view, I, I understand Jim's point with, with competing funds. However, for me, the trust, from my perspective, the trust is the only way that we are going to be able to follow through on the affordable housing plan that, that we approved, that town approved, and that, that we voted in favor of with this board. To me, the trust is the, is the vehicle that's, the only vehicle that's gonna get that done when you're looking at 33 units needed annually to accomplish that, and we certainly didn't have 33 units in the last year. So, so we're already behind the eight ball on that, so from, that's where my concern would come in with, with not funding it. And respectfully, I, I understand Jim's point as well, but I have to put my two cents worth in.
Thank you. Just to sort of respond a little bit to Mary's point, because, yeah, I don't disagree with you, Mary, that's for sure, and it does take a lot of money, but, I mean, the, the housing trust is in its formative stages, is going to take a while before it even sort of figures out what the best option is going to be. As Charlene pointed out, there are numerous options that can work, and clearly, it should be funded, and it should be funded at a level that, you know, the house has the, the trust has the ability, you know, to act in the way it thinks is best for the Town of Harwich. However, until that is a little bit clearer as to how the trust wants to proceed, I'm just concerned about tying up funds that could be used for other, you know, worthy items and worthy projects that are ready to proceed.
Sure.
If I might, I agree with both of you wholeheartedly. I agree more with Mary, but, I mean, you're right, until you see applications, you know, this number may go down.
Yeah.
This number may even go up if there is more money available in the affordable housing pot, and you have the ability to, to do that.
Correct.
But, I mean, at this point, I think the vote that's being looked for is supporting the actual application to fund it in some means, and the CPC is gonna decide how much, if any, money is going to be, you know, allocated to them, to, to this grant. But we do need money to keep things going, and it may be that, you know, 470,000 dollars may not be nearly enough to even get started, but once we get started, I think we're gonna be on a roll. I mean, I'm just looking at the way Yarmouth has worked with what they've been able to do, and it's, it's awe-inspiring.
Yeah. So, is, Joe?
Can you tell me who the housing trustees are?
Right now, it is the town administrator is automatically the chair, so Christopher Clark. The selectman designee is Don Howell, and the first member at large is actually Larry Brophy. We are still looking for two additional members. I know they have either four or five applications in. I'm hoping that they will be interviewing, the, the subcommittee of the selectmen will be interviewing them shortly, and hopefully bringing a couple names forward for appointment. and hopefully bringing a couple names forward for appointment so that we can round it out. Technically, we have a quorum, but do we really want to start getting going with only three people? You know, it's up to them, but I think they're waiting till they have a full contingent.
Any other, Mary?
My only, my only other comment is a follow-up to Jim's is if the trust doesn't get funding this year, they won't be able to, they won't get any additional funding, at least from CPC, until 2020. So I just know that the, that the four seventy is enough to get you through till June of 2020 or the end of July of 2020.
Well, certainly, we, we definitely would need the money for the Housing Coordinator. I mean, that, you know. But, and I do believe also, there may be a movement afoot. As you may know, the tower in East Harwich, the funds from that go into a different Housing Trust. I think there may be a movement to actually transfer and do whatever needs to be done to have that money go into this trust as well. This trust cannot rely one hundred percent on getting money every year from CPC. There needs to be other funding mechanisms created that will allow for this to happen. Orleans actually did an override last year. I'm not suggesting, please don't. I don't want to see anything out there. But just as an example, Orleans did an override last year to fund, to help fund their Housing Trust. And I think they began with two hundred thousand dollars. So that can go up two percent every year, if they want to do it. They definitely have the two hundred thousand dollars, which the override will cover every year. And they can also go up two percent because of Prop two and a half.
Just a matter of interest. We talked about this tonight at, in my earlier meeting. And one of the issues of grave concern is that town employees can't afford to live in the town.
Oh, I know.
And, and, and that's part of the, the problem that, that, that's an underlying problem. It's, it's, we, we have a housing issue in terms of affordable housing. But specifically, as an employer, the town has a problem that, that, you know, you hire somebody and they can't afford to live in the town.
Right. And the, the average home price in Harwich is well-
Three hundred something thousand dollars.
About three fifty.
Yeah. I think it's three fifty-six. You know, I mean, that's, young people are the, are our future. And, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about that, you know. We want them here. We need them. So.
I, I think too, if I, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, I don't know about anybody else, but I always pay attention when I'm at town meeting to see who's there. And we had, as you know, last town meeting.
Yeah, a great.
We had a big turnout and I think it was a lot about this issue. Not necessarily affordable housing, but taxation and, and so forth. As you recall, they had to put some people in an outside room because there wasn't enough room.
That's right. I mean, I think, I think people are concerned.
It's an issue.
Yep.
And it's not going away.
So, yes, great. I was confused when I first received the agenda packet because my recollection was, well, we already approved this at annual town meeting last year. So what is the planning board being asked to do? What is our authority? I asked Charlene before we started. Would it behoove anybody for you to explain what you explained to me? I mean, we're not-
Do I remember what I said to you?
Well, I mean, we're not authorized.
Charlene, would you let me explain the process?
We as a board are not, by a vote tonight, assuming it's positive, are not authorizing an expenditure because my understanding, we don't have that authority. We're just endorsing it or supporting it in terms of a vote, really. And so, from that, in that, in that perspective, it may carry weight or it may not carry weight for those that, you know, make, are, are the decision-makers or who, those that are holding the purse strings.
You know, Craig, I, I think this was a healthy discussion.
Oh, I do too.
I really liked the fact that everybody spoke up. And I, and I think as a planning board, it's our opportunity, you know, to take, take a position, a united position, hopefully, on, on this issue. And so I think my, my question to the board would be, you know, would you, would you like to take a vote on, on supporting this?
And, Jim?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, my feeling, especially as also being a member of the Community Preservation Committee, is that clearly, yeah, I support, yeah, the concept of this application. Yeah, I, I support, I supported the development of the Housing Trust. I supported the, the amount that was contributed to it last year. What I would like to see us do is vote, basically, supporting the application, supporting the, in defining, supporting the thirty thousand dollar amount for the Housing Coordinator, which is something that is pretty much known at this point in time, that we're going to be proceeding with hiring, whether it be a person or a firm or whatever, and that we need that amount of money in order to keep that going because that's going to need to be an ongoing activity. And while supporting the concept, leaving the dollar amount open to the determination of the Community Preservation Committee.
That goes without saying, though.
It goes without saying, but if we vote to support this application that has the three-ten in it, I'm going to have to abstain because I don't feel that I want to be tied into that, you know, through a vote here. And that may be just a personal feeling that I have.
Yeah, I think maybe it should be more.
I, that's possible. It could be, you know. And again, until we get the totality of the applications to the Community Preservation Committee and we sort of figure out exactly what the funding available is, I don't feel capable of determining how much this is. And it could be more than the three-ten. So therefore, you know, I would prefer a vote that didn't tie us into these numbers. If the, the board as a whole would rather, you know, just support this application as written, what I think I'm going to do is just abstain because I don't want to vote against it because I support the concept. But I think I just have a concern with regard to the actual dollar amount.
I may. A question through you, Mr. Chair, to my brother over here. Would you be in support, would you feel comfortable voting simply in support of the trust's application to CPC to seek additional funds?
Yes. And I would even be in support of the dollar amount for the thirty thousand dollars. So, you know, the thirty thousand dollars for the coordinator because we, we have a better handle on what that is. And then, you know, general support for the application beyond that. And again, as you worded it, to seek additional funding.
So then I'd make a motion to support the trust's application to CPC to seek additional funds in this funding cycle, including, but not limited to thirty thousand dollars, which would be designated for Housing Coordinator.
And I could second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I'm not sure, but I think a member of my family is involved in this, in this position in some manner. So I'm going to abstain.
No, no, he's not.
No.
He's not.
He's on the Housing Committee.
He's on the Housing Committee.
He applied to be the Housing Coordinator.
No, he didn't.
Yes, he did.
No, he didn't because there's no job to add, there's no position for him to apply for.
I'm going to abstain. I'm not comfortable.
I, I-
For those reasons.
That's fine. That's fine, Joe. I, I think, look, it's an opportunity for us to, to vote to support the CPC application, right, for the Housing Trust. And two, to, to recognize the funding that has been set aside, the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the Housing Coordinator. Mary, you've made your-
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Can we have a vote on that? Any in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention?
So six zero one?
Thank you very much. And thanks for the, thanks for the discussion. Okay, the next, the next item we have under new, new business is the minutes to the September eleventh, twenty eighteen meeting. It was an exciting one. And so we have a vote to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I'm going to abstain because I was-
Do you have to abstain, Mary? You weren't there.
He's not present.
Any opposed? I'm certainly not opposed. Next, we have advisory opinions.
We did not get any.
No advisory opinions?
Well, we got nothing from other boards or committees, so you don't have anything.
Then we have the next big-ticket item here, which is the meeting on October eleventh.
Right now, you have absolutely nothing has been scheduled for October eleventh.
It says Tuesday, October eleventh, which is a Thursday, according to my calendar, unless I missed that.
Oh, it is. It is a Thursday. Because, yes, it should be a Thursday.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion that we not have a meeting on October eleventh.
Can I ask a question about October, whatever it is?
You need a second before you can discuss it.
Second, for purposes of discussion.
Yeah, please.
Is, is that the date that the Planning Director is out of the country?
I didn't really want the public to know I wasn't going to be here, yes. I don't, I don't like the world knowing where I am.
So, so, okay, so therefore, that's another reason to-
Yes.
Cancel.
Nothing's on the agenda.
And you have, absolutely nothing came in for an application.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have nothing on the agenda.
You have a second?
We've seconded the, the motion. All in favor of no meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So your next meeting will be Tuesday, October twenty-third.
Yay.
You're right. It would have been on a Thursday if you did meet.
And that is a continuation?
Continuation of Nickerson and a new application.
Oh, God bless America and the town of Harwich. Is there any old business, Charlene?
I have nothing. I did hand out to you a draft schedule for, that we will discuss on the twenty-third. So please take a look at that. And if there's, there's training available, if you are interested, definitely get in touch with Elaine. We have money in the budget to cover it.
Okay. I'm okay with that schedule. Anybody?
But we'll, we'll discuss it formally on the twenty-third.
Okay.
It's not on your agenda.
I looked at it. Fine. Any, any old, any old business? Any briefings or reports by board members? Mary?
I can give you a brief briefing from Historic. We actually imposed a demolition delay on fifty-two Depot, which is actually the house in West Harwich next to the Baptist Church. It's across Depot from the Baptist Church. So that home has a demo delay imposed for, for a year. Just as a point of interest for those that-
Mary, who owns that?
It's an LLC. Joe, I'm not sure who the, who the actual owners are. Church, the church sold it eight years ago.
What's the house number?
I think it's fifty-two Depot, if I remember correctly.
The White House right on the corner.
It's the White House on the corner. It's got a, it's got a, one of the big red X's on it so that the fire department won't-
Oh, you did impose that, okay.
Won't go in. That's to tell the firemen that the floors can't hold additional weight. So, so that is, that's been held from the hearing we had. We were told it had been sold by the church to this LLC eight years ago. And it's certainly suffered some disrepair since then. So the, there was quite a discussion at our Historic meeting and, and we voted to impose the delay.
Okay.
Haven't done that, that I recall, since I've been on the board, so.
I've not heard of it ever, but I haven't been there that long, so. Is that a year delay?
It's a twelve-month delay.
Okay, is there anything else, Joe?
Just from capital outlay, we had our first real meeting this evening, earlier, four o'clock. And we're scheduled for a whole series of meetings, October second, sixteenth, twenty-third, and November first. And what we do there, for those that maybe didn't know, is that we review capital expenditures of departments. And essentially, what occurs mechanically is that if a department head has a request in excess of-
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars, they have to come before capital outlay. And we review it with them and, and figure out, first of all, of course, if we can afford it. And secondly, when, when, or we suggest to them when we think it, it can happen. I would say to you, just as a matter of interest in terms of the operation of the capital outlay, that since Chris has been the administrator, and so I've been on it for a while, he makes our, our work easy because he gets everything together for us ahead of time. We can read it and review it and look at it and, and make some sense out of it rather than try to stumble our way through a, a particular department's budget, of which we have no knowledge, other than what's public record, you know. So anyway, we had our first meeting and we have a series of meetings over the next several weeks that will review the various departments and their request for capital expenditures.
Okay. Joe, I, I have a, this is just out of curiosity more than anything else. But when, when someone comes before that group to ask for funding in excess of fifty thousand dollars, you know, do, do they do any sort of a, a cost-benefit analysis? I mean, is there any, any, you know, they, do they look at, well, here, if we spend this, this is the benefit to the community? Or is there, you know, this will offset spending or anything like that?
Pretty much. I, I, I think that that's, that's a fair explanation of what they talk about or what they, in other words, they can't just say, I'm the Department of Public Works, Commissioner or whatever his title is, and I want to put a new road down Lower County Road, which incidentally is a project we, we approved a couple of years ago and is currently going on, if you haven't been down there.
Yeah, it's going on already.
Yeah, it is.
It's changing my, it's changing my ride every day.
Well, the water department is working on it now. But they didn't, by the way, as a matter of interest to you, it's going to take them two years to go from twenty-eight down to the Dennis Line on Lower County Road by the time they're done. Because they're going to, of course, anytime you're going to dig up a road in town, I've learned from being on this committee, is the water department always says, well, if you're going to dig up the road, we'll, we'll, we'll replace the pipes. And so they, they go in and, and replace the pipes. But it's, anyway, that's, that's, those are the kinds of projects that, that we have. And, but that was before us, two years ago, at least a year ago. And, and now it's just getting started. And, and we, we have virtually, I don't, you don't need, need all that, but we have virtually every department is coming in and has a proposed expenditure of over fifty thousand dollars for something. Maybe not right away, maybe sometime in the future. But everybody's coming, so we'll see what they have to say. And, and to answer your question directly, and that's what they come for, is to justify it.
Yeah.
Right. This is what I need and this is why I need it. For example, like the water department, you know, the new tank up-
Lowthrup.
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 Well, they, of course, they had to come before us and so forth and so on. And I was saying tonight that when I first went on that committee, the fire department came before us because they were buying a new ambulance.
Yes. Yes.
And it wouldn't, and it's not that long ago. It was $85,000 for new ambulance. New ambulance today, when they come before us...
485.
It's, well, almost 4...
About 385.
It was 385, I think, this year.
I mean, it's, and as I said at the, at the earlier meeting, I complained about the cost until I had to have a chance to take a ride in it, and I was very happy they had a good ambulance.
I think a lot of, my experience and what I've seen in working with them is often they'll be, in some cases, it can be a cost avoidance type of thing...
Right.
Where you have to do it. In other cases, it could be a revenue producing project, you know, the golf committee putting in, I don't know, something, whatever, that's going to enhance revenue. So I think it depends on the type of project. I recall from Station 2, couldn't really do, it wasn't appropriate, there wasn't anything that we could show, other than, I mean, clearly had to show the need, but, you know, benefit and service would be, you know, improved service and that kind of thing, but it was hard to translate it into a dollars and cents kind of thing.
Yeah, you know, I mean, those are, look, I've spent a career, part of my career anyway, on cost avoidance, because I, what I headed up, right, for a company, and I, I get it, and I just tend always to look at, regardless of the cost or the projected savings, there's got to be some benefit somewhere.
Yeah.
But I, listen, I'm very glad to hear from the historical committee, from the capital outlay committee. I think it's very informative and it's very helpful, so thank you all very much. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to give a report from the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay.
Especially in light of our earlier discussion. The Community Preservation Committee has had two meetings since our last planning board meeting. One was the legally required public hearing to try to get input from residents of the town into what should be funded with community preservation funds. This hearing was held, we had some public discussion, but we did not have as much public discussion or input as we had had the previous year.
Yeah.
But the meeting was held, and the committee is taking into consideration the suggestions that were made in that public hearing. The second one, which I think to me is more important, was a meeting to receive reports on all active projects that had been funded by community preservation funds. When we first came up with this idea as a way to sort of get better understanding of where these projects were, and to try to have better control over how spending was going with community preservation funds, we were a little bit concerned about what the response would be. Well, we found out the response was very good. The projects were very responsive, provided us with all the information we need, and what I would like to report, for the most part, all the projects are making reasonable progress, which was what we weren't quite sure of, and we were very happy to find out.
That's good. That's good news. Thank you.
How many people on that committee?
On the, there are spaces for nine. I think right now we have eight members.
And who's the chair?
The chair is David Nixon.
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much.